Busy.
It's not working.
What's the work you do? Close to home? He lives in Greece. Like, I'm not working, I'm going to training today for this week. You gotta do a 30-hour course in your first year.
Oh, you got it, yeah, right?
Yeah.
No, that's okay.
Yeah. But I didn't sign up for any summer work through July and August. But I've been doing, I've been on the Learn to Ride program at NCC. I've been training that for a few months. So this week and last week and this week, the final, they call it the nomination of... It's his company.
Yeah. When I took my course, she was a teacher.
So they call my coaches. So that's what I'm doing. The coach.
I don't know, she said no what to find, but you know, that's how it works.
I was very surprised how much work it took to become a life. I started in December during, you know, a night there, night there. Some of the weather guys were actually doing some special workshops all over NCC every week. And now I'm at the corner of the street. Our certification, so by end of Sunday. I am one of them. There's seven of them. Oh, yeah. All right, let's start. Because I'd like to welcome everyone to our July 24 meeting. Let's see. Now, let's see. Derek, Pixel.
Present.
And Jan Posel.
Present.
The record Dave Arena.
Here.
Dave Malta.
Here.
Derek Anderson.
Here.
Mark Jardina, my son. Josh Artuso is here. Kyle is here. All right, let's start from here. Let's see, Dave, yes. Dave, first of all, why don't you start with that inspiration?
211 Inspirational Point Dock in Deck located 211 Inspirational Inspiration 211. 211 Inspiration Point Road. African Robert Brown is requesting preliminary final dock approval at LWRP.
Consistency?
Yes. Consistency determination associated with the construction of a four-foot by 100-foot permanent dock with a covered boat lift and an adjacent 12-foot by 20-foot dock on a 1.43-acre parcel located in our three-single-family residential district under the code of Town Webster.
Yes, sir.
Hello, thank you, I'm Robert Brown. I'm Robert Brown, I own 211 Inspiration Point Road. I've lived in Webster my whole life until I moved away. Was away for about 30 years, moved back, bought this house. And the thing that it didn't have was a dock. My wife wants a 35-to-50-foot boat. And so we need a little bit longer dock than the code requires. Because there's a, you can't see it on the survey, but there's 75 feet of sand that's very shallow. So we need to put a deep boat in, we need a dock that goes out a little bit longer than the code request. You also can't see here, but the parcels next to me on this map that you guys have, all four parcels next to me have docks. And so originally, I wanted a dock on the north side, so that's the other side from where the dock is. But the DEC said they didn't like that. So I gladly moved it to the other side where all the other docks are. And so I hope that I can get approval for that.
Tadoki. Yeah. Yeah, I remember you did have it, but on the coast side earlier.
It did, and the DEC says they don't want it there. And so I'm a go-along, get-along guy. There are pilings on that side from an old dock. There are pilings on this side from an old dock. So, and there's metal scrap everywhere, all of which will be removed, too heavy for being moved. That's part of this process.
Okay, anybody have questions or concerns on this? It's pretty, pretty cut and dried out, but he's dealt with Josh and everything. It's pretty consistent with everything. The 100-foot, I understand what you're saying, is shallow, we're short, you need to have a length to get to the deeper water, which is probably about 25 feet anyways, I'm guessing.
Yeah, easy, yeah. If you have a person get stuck with a similar-sized boat, so I know you can't take this boat in there.
Yep. What are you, is it a floating dock or a stationary?
No, it's piles and steel, and then they pour concrete into them.
Yep.
And then they deck it steel dock.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Are you required, do you have lights on the end of it? No, they didn't, but it...
Yeah, over 100 feet, you have to have lights on.
They will absolutely electrify it. We have a boat lift anyways.
Yeah, you would have to have them there, sure.
I was done anyways.
Yeah, 100-foot, I think, is the maximum, and then you have to have lights on. All right. Again, this is a public hearing, so if there's any neighbors, anyone who can speak to your board, this is project. Let's see, okay, we'll close it. Close the public hearing, bring it back up to the board, any concerns? Mark? Derek?
It says north side, this is the one, takes it to the north side.
Yeah, so this is going north now, yeah. Where all the other neighbor stacks are on the parcel, and the other four parcels on that one.
This is fine, just point of clarification with the drawing by Coker Survey and PC has been modified by the town. It's not a drawing by Coker.
Yeah.
For the record.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much all we've ever required, the actually, I remember putting my own back in. I had to go through the song, sing the song and dance. You know, I took a site drawing of my property.
Yep.
Sketch down where the dock was gonna go. The town was fine, the DEC was fine, our core engineers were fine. It's fine with them, it's fine with us, I guess. Okay, no one wish to speak, we close the public hearing, we put it down here, you guys have any comments?
No, it's good.
Good to go, Derek? Derek, you want to go second?
Town, what's your plan for considering request by African Robert Brown to construct a four-foot wide, a 100-foot permanent dock with covered boat lift and an adjacent 12-foot by 20-foot floating, or foot dock on a 1.43-acre parcel in the SBL number 078.13-1-4.0, sorry, .101 located at 211 Inspiration Point Road. The planning board determined that the proposed action was on listed action under under Part 617 of the State environmental laws of regulations. The planning board determined that the action is subject to single agency review pursuant to Part 617.6b1 of SEER, and that is the most appropriate agency for making determination of significance. The planning board therefore does admit, say, sorry, does it make itself the agency for the proposed action. The planning board in due consideration to the criteria for determining significance as set forth in Section 617.7c1 of SEER and has one considered the information contained in the current environmental assessment form dated June 22, 2022. Number two considers color town is directed to the planning board during public hearing in July 18, 2022. Completely part to the environmental assessment form. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for reasons set forth in the attached notes of determination on significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board is authorized to make all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and discharges the Town of Webster Planning Board's responsibility to lead agency for this action. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the information analysis of all the reference supporting documentation, the discussion of the action by the Town of Webster Planning Board is documented by the document that admits that the proposed action will not result in a significant environmental impact. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board therefore makes a determination on significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the above reasons, issues a negative declaration as evidence of this determination.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Before we make a motion for approval, we should, you've pretty much covered it all, but just separate, we should have a resolution for the LWR, the local waterfront revitalization district. And I'll make a motion to that. And based on, the project is, it's, let's see, I don't get it right. And it's contingent on approvals and permits from the New York, or from the US Corps of Engineers and the XA DDC. And the project does not have a significant adverse impact on traffic, sewage, air quality, and aesthetics in the area. It's not detrimentally impacting groundwater streams that have flood zones or the water table in the area. Public utilities and services are adequate to meet needs of the proposal. The project is not contiguous to any critical environmental area. The project will not affect any threatened or endangered species of plant, animal, wildlife, nor will it impact significantly upon agricultural or historic sites or archaeological resources. We use that for motions for the LWR, P, I need a second.
Second.
And motion is that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good with that. Somebody want to make a motion for approval of the dock?
Make a motion for...
This would be for approval, may I?
For 211 Inspiration Point Dock in Deck located at 211 Inspiration Point. Subject to YRC comments. Was there a variance granted on this?
Varyance, no.
Did he need any variance?
No, he didn't know the variance.
All improvements shall be constructed according to the specifications of the Town of Webster. All site work to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster. Comply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency. And approvals are subject to drawing as...
Okay, you have a motion, you have a second.
Second.
Who's second? Because we want to get the, I want to make sure these two are directed. Jan, Dave?
Yeah.
Jan Posel? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And just follow through with the final.
I think I have a motion for final approval for 211 Inspiration Point Dock in Deck. Subject to project, the YRC comments. Subject to preliminary approval conditions. Subject to all applicable government fees. Significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to aspire on July 18?
19.
19?
Yep.
2022?
Through.
2023?
You gave a false...
Conditions are preliminary, final approval, pick it up, cover page of plans. Subject to resolution of final approvals. Approvals are subject to drawing number, I find this.
Second.
Okay, you have a second? Now, Josh, you have all the, you have permits and everything from the DEC map, and so everything is ordered. Okay, you have a motion, you have a second, all in favor for final approval?
Aye.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you, it was nice to talk to you.
You may be on the line working on it right now. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, Dave, what have you said?
325 Webster Road, Woodhall subdivision located 325 Webster Road. Buckholz is requesting sketch plan review associated with the proposed 12-lot residential subdivision on a 12.78-acre parcel located in an R-1 single-family residential district under the code of Town Webster.
Hi.
Sir.
Just kind of pin up something here. Which you already have. We would have much rather preferred you had smaller drawings. Beg your pardon? Smaller drawings are generally required, you know, load by 14 or whatever. I wish I could only use the table clause.
Thank you, my name, as you know, is Jack Buehlz. I'm the site engineer for this project. This is a concept plan meeting. And the project, the intent is to develop 12 lots on a 12.28-acre site at the northwest corner of Webster Road and Woodhall Road. The site is heavily wooded. It's, there are no wetlands or floodplains, no hazardous waste. Soil is a very uniform, what we call blow sand. Very uniform blow sand, we did eight test pits out there, all of the site, everything is identical down to the feet. The, we're proposing a private drive coming off Wood, I don't know if you can see, this is Webster Road, north is up. Village is down here, is Woodhall, cemetery is here. We're proposing a private drive here to serve these seven lots. There's an existing driveway here which will be upgraded and maintenance access preserved for this homeowner back here for these two lots. And these three lots would front directly onto Webster Road. We will have to do a homeowners association for these seven lots here. Typical house, the way we're proposing it, we are proposing for this to, it's very wooded here. We're proposing to keep this wooded. The intent is to provide for the house and up to 50 feet behind it and up to 40 feet in front of it can be cleared, the rest has to stay wooded. There are a couple of reasons for that. One is the owner developer wants to keep this as a very wooded site. Thinks that the homeowners would like that. It also will reduce visibility from outside the site or between houses. And there's a third reason, which I'll get into in a bit. Of the houses, of the lots, it's our one zoning. These all would meet the requirements of zoning for setback and size with the respect, with exception of this particular lot. It's three inches too narrow for the zoning. And it's about 5,000 feet lower than the area required. So in order to develop this particular lot, which is closest to the intersection of Woodhall and Woodhall and Webster, we would require to get area bearings as...
Sir, can you talk into the microphone?
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. Can you repeat what I just said? Please, yes. With the exception of one of the lots, this one here in the southeast corner, the other lots all meet the zoning requirements for area and lot size and setbacks, et cetera. This particular one is three inches narrower than required for its zone and 2,000 feet smaller in area than its 35,000-feet requirement.
I'm gonna interrupt you just a second.
Yes, sir.
You probably, because there's people here, I'm sure, which are the neighbors. Can you just distinguish where Woodhall is?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Because you don't have it on the drawing, so I think it'll help everybody.
It's hard to see, I guess. So this is north, the lake is up there, and the village is down here. This is Woodhall Road, and there's a cemetery south of this. And this is, our site is here. So it's northwest of the intersection of Woodhall and Webster Road. There are some, it doesn't front on Webster Road, or Woodhall Road, with the exception of one piece in here. I think what I'd like to do maybe is jump into the comments from the staff at this point. And then I'll come back for a couple of things. So I got your comments, Josh. I did try to read you what your mailbox called. The first comment, I guess, is that we'll need to ensure cross-access easement is in place for existing residential which is affecting Webster Road. Yes, there is an existing easement for this parcel here, which is west of Webster Road. That's an existing driveway that will be actually upgraded. That easement will be maintained and kept for that parcel. The fire marshal requests dimension to be added to a proposed private drive and turn around to ensure it meets code. Yes, I think we've shown the width, and we designed this to meet the fire code and uniform building code. We will concur with the code in that. Should confirm with DOT that three additional curb cuts will be permitted. We've contacted the New York State DOT office, the Eastern District Office, Eric Williams and Dan McCusker. And they've indicated that this should be fine, but we'll have to go through the permit process for that. Engineering Department states project cannot feasibly construct without disturbing less, without disturbing, I think they mean more than five acres during build-out. This is significant because there's something we want to do with storm drainage here that relies on the ability to keep the total disturbed area less than five acres. Now, the comment that was made, I would say, is an opinion. Because the grading plan shows the disturbed areas here in shaded, and this is just under 4.5 acres. So we're saying that we will stay under five acres. And if the town requires, we will reduce the clearing behind the houses. We have shown these with a minimum of 40 feet clear in front of each house and 50 feet behind it. You see, there's 15 or 20 feet on each side. We can reduce that slightly if that brings more security or comfort to the engineering department. But we will keep this under five acres. And that includes, that five acres includes areas that won't really be touched, but will be turned into lawn. Where trees may be, will be taken down, includes driveways, utility trenches, and houses. Second comment, with New York State DEC requirement proposed construction stormwater management must be included in design. This is not a DEC requirement under this circumstance. The New York State DEC has a provision for residential areas which are not contributory to 303D contaminated streams, and this is not contributive to those, where less than five acres are disturbed and less than 25% is impervious. We need all those criteria. In that case, New York State DEC provides that you must provide erosion sediment control plan, but you do not have to put in a stormwater management control for flow. Now, in my engineering report that I sent into the town, I looked at the standard DEC calculations with their software for the case of the existing pre-developed condition and as we propose, and the flow difference, as we propose it, without a detention pond is very, very slight. We normally look at the one, the 10, the 25, the 100-year storm. Just to give you an idea, the one-year storm runoff from this site today is zero. And the way I've designed it will be zero. The 10-year runoff for 3.6 inches of precipitation today is 0.4 cubic feet per second. After development, it will be 0.4 cubic feet per second. The 25-year will increase from .8 to .9 CFS, and the 100-year from 1.8 to 1.9 CFS. These are pretty small flows for a 12-acre site. And the reason is because it's very wooded, it's very sandy, and it has a lot of leaf litter on it. So very high in permeability, and the water tends to go through. That's why even though the site grades out this way, there are no deep swales here that would indicate runoff. And the information I sent in, I think you may have read, there would be big problems if we had to put in a detention pond. First of all, because you would have to discharge a grade here, that means we would have to build up the land here. We'd have to build up the land to be able to put in a detention pond with the type of drop that's required by New York State DEC for a detention pond. And that means we would have to clear the woods out, and we would have to build up the property to do that. So that's, that's one reason we would like not to do that. We really want to keep this as a wooded development. Let me go on with the comments here.
How, how easily is this program?
Yes, sir.
You're saying that the disturbed area is where the houses are going. That's impossible.
Why is that?
Why? Because you need to put utilities into the front of these yards?
Yeah, they're coming in along the driveways.
Yeah, okay, along the driveway, but not in the driveway. So that means that's that much more disturbance.
I have, we have calculated this to be under four and a half acres.
Well, I bet you did. But I still don't see how you can do that, because where the house is built, you can put foundations, cellars, basements?
Oh, definitely.
Okay, so if you've got basements, where do you put your soil? Where do you put your excavation soil outside the house? You're showing the disturbed area is 24-foot by 70.
Tony, we are allowing about over 100 feet of depth and about 100 feet of width per lot, plus the driveway in our calculations. So we have a lot of space here to work with. If you look in your grading plan, we show shaded the disturbed area, but we also show contours, and we show where the house is, and we show where the driveway is. And we have the ability to reduce the distance behind the house where the clearances, if that's more appropriate. We've allowed 50 feet. You know, we're going less than that. And we're still half an acre under. Now, half an acre is 21,000 square feet.
Well, as far as that aspect, I think I'd leave that up to the engineers and if somebody figured that one out, because I'm just seeing a hard time with that.
Okay, well, why not?
What would be the difference, what do we have to do? Do you have to get some support? If you're actually doing all the work on a site like this?
Yeah, if they exceed the five acre threshold.
Yeah, so by saying I'm only doing four and a half, I would guarantee you, when you go to do it, you can't do this in four and a half acres of disturbance.
Well, we would still have to do our weekly swift reports and file those for DEC. But we would not have permanent, a permanent detention basin there for that. And we wouldn't be wiping out, you know, taking out all the forest here and raising the site to be able to drain into this pond so that we could discharge at ground level.
Is there going to be a pond anywhere?
Well, we're proposing that there not be.
Now, is that kind of wet area in there at all, it's kind of warm?
Very, very wet.
It's very wet.
Not this year, but...
This is the only dry year ever.
When you bring in 25 loads of dirt in one yard?
That we're not gonna start with, okay? Please. Curious and do it right. This was at P R C and it was discussed. And in my opinion, the drainage based on highway department and so on is to the northwest.
Yes, it is.
Correct? Okay, all right. So lot number twelve, where is that? Lot number twelve, yeah. In the northwest corner. My suggestion at the P R C was that should be considered for detention pond. I hear what you're saying. There's not a lot of flow, there's not this, there's not that. I'm not thrilled with the drawing.
Well, I guess what I'm gonna ask you is.
This is chopped up, this is.
This feels like Frankenstein.
It's, it's a, it's a maze. Private drives going back?
Yeah.
Let's see, you've got one, two. Okay, what is lot number eleven? Lot number eleven has a driveway coming in, okay? Gotta figure this thing out here. This is number eleven. Then he also has property room next to it, to the east of it, correct?
Yes, there's a, yeah, there's a flag lot, if you like, to lot twelve, which is to the east of lots ten and eleven. Correct.
Is this been considered to just make like four, five, six lots? Just standard neat, complete lots as opposed to this?
When you say standard, do you mean like three times as much as money is covered required?
You queued up a little bit, not with all these driveways running all the way across. Is there any considerations in developing it there? I mean, we're jamming twelve, twelve yards, twelve homes in yards at a piece that just, I don't know. Would you guys speak up and help me out or pick it up?
Your driveway, you know, it shows twelve feet for the driveway, but there's a long flag lots in front of the back. The gray line you're claiming is that's gonna be only disturbance. How do you keep the six-foot area from not being disturbed between those two driveways? How do you keep this white space between all the? The reality is it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna get torn out, there's a half acre extra, you're over a five acre disturbance.
Well, I'll tell you what, then. What I guess I'd like to know is that.
The, the general layout of this thing is it's, I'm surprised that there isn't more questions from the fire marshal for distance from the road back to the rear house. Whether or not it's acting anyway, I mean, sprinkled because it's so far away from any possible fire danger. How are you, how are you gonna provide fire protection to these places? Is this, is this a one, one service coming into these things? Are the individual services running back to these houses?
There is a dedicated, yeah, there will be a dedicated main coming to here and a height here. And then individual services to each of the homes.
Can you stand on the other side so we could see where you're planning? Sorry, thank you.
Yes, there's a private drive, there will be, the water ferry will put in a water main here with a height here and individual services to each of these seven lots.
And what about the other lots?
These two are gonna be served from the water main here. And these three will be served, there's a water main on the east side of Webster Road.
How, how is sanitary being handled around these?
Okay.
Do you have follow for that to be able to grab it? Are there gonna be E one stations for everyone in these places?
All right, that was the next thing. What we want to do is, and in fact, this was recommended at a meeting that we said, Josh, that we put in grinder pump stations. That is what we would like to do. We would put in grinder pump stations and we would provide them, they would run next to each other. They're one and three-quarter inch grinder pipes. They would run along these areas here and down here and we would put them into a manhole. This would be a dedicated manhole and we would run a sewer along here to the existing sewer, eight hundred feet to the west. And that would also provide sewer for any residents that wanted to hook up. That's the, that's the intent. We did look at gravity sewers. There is fall here that goes this way. So a lot here can't really be done by grabbing because the lateral leading the house has to be half four feet covered. So it's down almost five feet. It has to upgrade for several feet to get up here and then go to the manhole. And the manhole, I think, is only six or seven feet deep. So we probably would be, if we were to put in, if we were to run it this way and put in a regular manhole with gravity system, we probably would be close to twenty, fifteen, twenty feet deep here. And if we put a pump station here, we probably would be about twenty feet deep at this point. And then run a forest main instead of sewer. So the intent is to use grinder pumps, E one or better. And the intent is to use dual duplex ones. So if there's a problem with one, the other one's still there. That would be our, that would be our intent. I saw what the sewer department wrote. They didn't talk at our meeting, Josh, but I saw what they wrote. They don't like grinder pumps and I think the, the reason they don't is because they get the call. Even though these are private, it's really not the town's system. The whole system would be quiet all the way to this manhole. And I think that was their concern stated here. But that is the way we would like to do it. And I guess what I'm asking is, we would like to be able to continue to work with engineering, sewer department and highway department to, I guess, work, work through this. I know that this particular approach for drainage is unusual. It's designed specifically for projects like this. It's not that common. But it is one that exists and I think it's actually would be much better. I think the residents around it would like it better because the woods would be preserved. We wouldn't have point discharges, which I think is nice. We wouldn't have to bring in, I don't know, thousands of cubic yards of soil trucked in in order to fill the site so we could put a pond there that meets D E C requirements. So I would like to think that the town would be open to us continuing to work with the staff to see if we could sell our case on this. And if we can't, then, then we'll have to find some other way to do this.
Why separate individual driveways to link back to those three parcels and not just one?
These two? We just did it this way. I mean, I guess you could put one in, you could put a wider one in and bring it chocolate, I guess.
Yeah, that could, that could be just, you know, that could be the cross-easement, move onto the other side.
You could make it wider too, then.
I have never seen in all my years, never saw this type of an arrangement with a subdivision in a town. I think, who would you want to be in that in years?
Well, Tony, it sounds to me like there are a couple of engineering issues that we would have to work out with the town staff. And we understand that we'd like the opportunity to be able to do that, if the town would allow us to do that. And it sounds to me like the planning board has a bit of an issue with the number of lots here, based on the way we were doing.
Yeah, I think, number one, that, well, number twelve lot, I should start with that, should actually be a detention pond back in there. I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I think that area is kind of moist. And based on that, there's going to be drainage coming off of all these roads. It's all impervious surface. The rooftops, the drainage from the downspouts, so on and so forth, there's, there's no smart sewers in here. So this is all free flow water. And you say you're only clearing five acres, which I've, I've dealt with on that too. That's a lot of water that could potentially be running, surface water. And how, how is it down there? Is it wet underground too? Are there soap pumps? I don't, I don't know how the drainage is.
I don't know, I don't live out there. All I know is we went out and we did test pits and we went down eight things. And what we were, what was kind of amazing to me was that the soil is uniform in that work. Where I, we did all eight, all over the place.
Were you dug down eight foot? Was it dry eight foot down or was it?
It was dry, there were no mineral deposits, there was no, it was water. Now, that's when we were there.
That was last?
Excuse me, are we gonna have a chance?
No, 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 excuse me. Wait until, you know, okay, let me get something straight here. This is not a public hearing tonight. It's just a concept.
Okay.
Public hearing would be the next one, the one there. I understand you all have concerns and we do respect that. We're here, we will give you a chance to come up and speak. That we will do, but please just bear with us to get to that point, okay? Thanks. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, like I said, I'd be glad to be able to work with the town. You know, we can, we can go back and look to see if we might want to eliminate a lot. Even if we don't need a pond, maybe we'll eliminate a lot. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll eliminate lot twelve or make this all lot twelve. The idea of a detention pond kind of suggests that you have to get all the water to it. So that means all the water that kind of percolates in here, you've got to put in storm sewers and run it all to this place and have one point discharge.
Are you doing a sort of normal subdivisions now?
Yes, and they normally have a defined outlet. We don't really have that here.
There is none?
Well, there is a lower area here, but there's no swell. So, and the reason for that is because of the soils that are here and the fact that it's heavily wooded and it's covered with leaves too. So it has a lot of exorbitant power on this.
Okay, so maybe you need to do is check with, check with the highway department to see if there is any possibility of draining off of that site, just if we need. I don't know, maybe, maybe you're right, I don't know.
Now, I, I mean, if I were this, there's a large lot here. If I were this lot, and the woods pretty much end right about where the lot is. If I were this person, I don't think I would want to see somebody put a big pond here, take out, take out almost all the trees and fill this whole half of the site or more. I don't think I would want to see that. I don't think if I were a resident, I would want to see people truck, see truckload after truckload of earth come in to try and raise this site. I don't think I would want to see a point discharge where there wasn't one before. This, I know this is, it's not a typical site. I just feel that it's more environmentally sensitive and it's more aesthetically sensitive, I would say pleasant, than putting in a large detention pond here.
Well, to be more environmentally sensitive, I'd cut it in half with the number of houses. That would help a whole lot too, don't you think? You know, if you reduce the.
Obviously, we didn't develop, that would be the most environmentally sensitive.
But we're not saying that this would be the case, are we?
Okay, well, I think we can take away that, you're probably speaking for the board because you're heading your D R C meeting, I suppose. So I think there's a, there's a feeling that maybe there's too much development here. But again, I would just like to be able, Josh, to work with your staff people here to see if we can come to some foundation on this. The sewer is a big issue and the drainage is a big issue. If we can resolve those two, I think, everybody would be happy. That's all I have. I take very happy to answer any questions.
And I do understand what you're doing with this layout. It's, it is a unique approach to do this.
Yeah.
To me, like, they may still kind of do resolve. Is it due to just driveways going up into the two road course or?
Hey, I live in the near end. I, I see driveways that are a thousand feet long.
No, I, I really like putting, having a tree like that, just visually it works out.
I think.
The odd man point, the approach I've had is the flag parcel doing balance so that they have like a common driveway. I think that's a good way to do it as opposed to having isolated parcels with cross lines, one on each one's, the flag up.
I, I like your idea of that shared driveway.
I mean, I can see, the way, the reason that's so unique and that it truly does meet the D E C standards there is a way to control during this construction and make sure it's below the five acres. And then it is an approach that preserves the trees and the wooden nature of the area.
Right.
It is a little deceptive looking on the drying because you always have the impression that everything's gonna be cleared later. There is a part of the green space maintained on it. It's not gonna be as thick as it is now, for sure.
I think that.
If you do increase the runoff area on it, I would take a closer look at the runoff calculations. Because intuitively I'm not seeing that as being so much being the same. Just because the amount of asphalt and blue area. And then understanding, yes, you got trees and you got leaves on the ground and that is a different scene. And then you do open field or something to the lawn and that kind of thing. I've seen that argument before where they say that development's actually better off with fertile lands. That's not really the way, that's not the intent. As long as that stuff truly does meet the D E C standards, it is a, a unique approach to save the trees. There may be ways to make it more efficient too, beyond the, of what goes here. So you're actually disturbing the west side, maintaining the same number of houses. It does, it would save a lot of houses on the lot. The only lot like you're saying though that had his variance on it is this one parcel up off of the road. I understand why it's that shape because it fits the shape of the lot nice to it. Clearly, that's no reason it's that size. So you don't have a weird flag running down the back.
And this one, this, these lots here are actually used more than the forty feet in front because of drainage requirements here. And that's all factored in the four and a half acres.
First of all, we don't, I shouldn't say it there, we, the town staff reviews all the drainage and so forth. From our standpoint, I think it'd be a better help to have some other kind of visual to tell us where is the drainage actually going on this part. And when I look at the contours, even the proposals you have for the pads of the house, it's not that much higher than the surrounding areas. So that's how you're limiting the amount of filling disturbance on it, which you're building houses almost a trade for what's better.
Well, the finished floor, for example, here, the finished floor is at three twenty-nine and the next contour out here is three twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the garage itself is probably a little over one percent local rate, but the house is quite a bit more. You know, we provided that sixteen inches from the garage up to the first form, make sure the garage is drained of it too, I think.
Just a little better understanding for, for everybody, where, where is the drainage gonna go? Where does it go now?
It will continue, it will continue to go the way it goes now.
Does it ultimately tie into the stream?
I mean, I think it goes, that's why I don't really know, it's not defined, I don't really know exactly. It must end up over here someplace.
Yeah, see, that's the problem, see, where does it go? We know where it will.
I can, I can.
This is my basement.
It runs into my property.
Yeah.
I have a stream across the back of my property.
Okay, hold on, hold on a minute. We could do is have, maybe have the highway department check feasibility of needing the pond, first of all. I'm just guessing that we should have a pond based on the number of units and so on and so forth. We'll leave it up to them to see if the water finds a place to flow. All right, you know what we'll do here? Again, just repeating, it isn't a public hearing and obviously the people are concerned. We're concerned, I don't know how you feel about it too. So if you want to come up, just give me one or two time to come up. Just keep it short. Give us your name and address and, please, you want to go first? You want to go first? Yes, that was easy, she was already up.
My name's Lori Marie, twelve sixty Woodhull Road. You said that you don't live in Webster, correct, or in either of them? We brought in twenty-five ten-wheeler dump trucks full of dirt because it's wet. We dug our fence posts down six inches, water comes up, it's wet.
Where do you live?
We, twelve sixty Woodhull. Here's the corner house or right here? If this is the corner house.
It is, yeah.
With the second point.
So you're the second lot there?
Yep. We have a special sun pump put in because it's wet. For him to say that it's not gonna cause problems for us and not put anything in for us as far as retaining pond or anything like that, just. us as far as retaining pond or anything like that, just building back there, it's ridiculous on the side.
Okay, so you're, what you're, basically you're saying that your area is wet.
It's absolutely wet, absolutely wet.
That brings, brings on force, right?
Okay. It absolutely can't because our yard in the back goes up like this.
Well, you do have this idea, and let me, let me get a few more.
Okay, and one more thing is the traffic that it's going to cause. Why aren't they coming in at 250 is already busy, why aren't they making the main entrance come in off of 250 instead of bringing off traffic down Wood Hall?
Well, it's coming out of both sides actually. Probably equal load both ways. One, two, three, four, five, are they coming off in there?
Seven off of Wood Hall and five off of 250.
Yes, sir. Hi, Mike Porshad, I live right here at 1250 Wood Hall. And I've been there about 10 years and it's been wet every year except for this year. You can't mow your yard in some of the spots along the property line. And, you know, I don't know where all the animals are going to go. We've got fox, you know, rabbits, deer. Every year you see this stuff, you see turkeys.
Turkeys.
They're going to be gone.
Yeah, understand.
Webster.
Understand though, that part of it, we understand, we fully understand, but that's out of our control. Because bottom line is a person owns property and is developing. You can't tell them they can't do it, you know? Best we can do is get the best we can get out of it. So, the garden wildlife, totally understand what you're saying, but we can't control.
All the farms are gone.
Yeah.
All the woods are leaving. All the livestock.
Unfortunately, but that's, you're right.
And if it comes down to the money that he wants to make on the property, you know.
They'll all go in and buy it.
I think that we all go in, at least I will. And I'd buy up the piece behind me, to the side of me, whatever it would take for money in his pocket, because I'm sure that's what he's doing this for.
Yep.
That's always, that's always an option by neighbors is to purchase the parcel.
I would be willing, so.
That's the only way we can stop doing that. So if you guys want to discuss that room yourselves, I mean.
Many of us have.
Work with him.
Yeah.
We've tried to contact him, but.
Do you guys have a couple of comments you want to give?
Hello, because I'm up on the other end.
Just the same, that's all. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say to represent the other side, right on my Brian written house. My Brian written house on 307 Webster Road, so I'm right here. And just to echo everybody's comments, it's wet, right? I brought over 30 yards of dirt in my bag there last year because it's constantly a pond of water, right? So to say that, that, you know, there's runoff and whatever your calculations are, it doesn't runoff, it sits there, right? And you're, I agree with you. It's loomed, it's sandy, sandy loomed back there, but it doesn't, it doesn't drain. It doesn't drain away, you know, and it's, and again, all that here, we're proposing to build, it's all, it's all wet back there. I mean, you say that you don't need to do something for the, for the water, it's just insane to me, so.
Okay, thanks.
You know, and you're worried that if you build there, where's that watershed going to come? To me?
Well.
Or me?
Whatever they do in the development, then part of the program for the developer is to show how he's containing the water, that no more water's coming off of the property than what currently flows up. With the, that's generally done by detention pass to collect it for the rest back without flowing all over, so.
Yeah, grinding pumps on one or two.
Yes, sir.
I made some drive in Jersey, over here someplace. And every house has had a sump pump.
Getting nearer than Mike, can't hear you.
Every house, and I made some drive, had a sump pump. The one next to me used to have two sump pumps, and it ran all the way through August. So I mean, it's wet, wet. And I believe that site was originally, it was considered by the Webster Fire Department for the northeast flatter house.
Yes.
I think you walked away with because it was wet. At least that's what I heard.
Exactly.
No, man, that was, that was conclusion I could make. So I mean, I believe when you did your test, obviously it was dry. But every place, every year, the sump pump's running. And so that, I was like, you consider it for water to flow north west, and that's right towards the house, which is probably a half mile away from that.
Okay.
Okay?
Appreciate it. All right, just, we got one message, that there's a lot of water over there, so we found something else else. It's lightness.
So, my name is Steve Wright, I live at 305 Webster Road, and we own a 16-acre parcel that's adjoins this whole thing up in here. And I've lived, I've lived in here since I was, you know, probably almost 50 years between, I used to own 307, I own this one. And one of the things that we have hit constantly is water issues with sump pumps running heavy water. The other thing, as far as minerals, when I built this house, I had to put in a $14,000 subject system because I had mineral deposits that hurt, but I had mineral deposits at high levels, so I had to go with a.
Raise fill?
Raise fill in that area. So mineral deposits here are an issue. And the other thing, if anybody would like to take a walk right in here, where I mow this, because I keep the field mowed, and then I can get through this area here where it's wet about twice a year. And last year I couldn't mow it at all, this year I was able to get through it. So definitely, in my opinion, needs to have some kind of water retention storm plan, not only for, I don't need any more of the water coming my way because I, it's wet anyway, but for everybody else that's in here, there needs to be a spot to hold this water. Because as you talked about, Tony, between the driveways, runoff from all the houses, everything else, it's got to flux somewheres. And right now, if you look back in this area, right back in here, this is all pretty low down in here. And, you know, our, my concern is we're just going to create a situation we've got now, we're just going to make it worse. So I'd like to have you consider that as you go through the concept plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, gentlemen, you have.
So I'm Jeff Meecham, I'm at 1240, I own these 9.7 acres.
Jeff Meecham, is your last name?
Jeff Meecham. So I'm going to be the wonderful gift of additional water coming my way. Okay, currently, you're welcome anytime to come on my property, run tests, take a look. We're talking about water, water, water. I have a stream running through the back of my property currently.
Where is it?
It runs probably right through here on a diagonal heading toward Mainstone. It's a, it's a, it's a stream that probably runs better than six months a year, runs across that. We can walk together if you'd like to, and we'll take a look, depends on what time of year you're coming. But I have standing water on my property, and it takes about five days to drain after a big rainstorm. So in terms of fast drainage, it doesn't happen. Okay, I've been there since 2013, so I've been there nine years. The other, the other issue is I have a sump pump that runs three seasons, spring, summer, and fall. I have a backup siphoning system in case power goes out, in case I have an issue, because I've had my basement filled with water twice. I have a backup sump pump to plug in in case that one goes while the siphoning system's working. I'm not serious about not having another basement, basement issue. So in terms of standing water and drainage, you really need to reevaluate that situation because it's significant. And you're not just hearing it from one person, you're hearing it from everybody here.
So when should I come out and see that stream?
I have my business card here. Because I'd love to talk to you outside of this. I tried to buy it once, I was outbid, won the bid, but I'd love to talk to you about buying this land back. Okay? All of it or a portion of it? I'm interested.
But is the stream running these days? Have I already bought now today?
We, schedule a time, you and I can walk back there together, all right? I bought knee-high boots, the first, the first day I was walking the land because I ruined a few pair of shoes. And now I walk back there all the time with my, my rubber boots and there's a stream. Again, it doesn't run, it doesn't run it all year long, but it runs, you know, a good portion of the year.
I will definitely come.
Good portion of the season. And I have a well on my property as well, because I have tons of water. And my, my lawn care person, he's full-time in Webster, and he says, I have the wettest lawn that he's never cut in Webster. It's a sponge. Thank you.
Okay, we do have, we are a few comments, thank you for that, I wish. We do have a few comments, I'll just go to them quickly. These were emailed in. This one is from 325 Wood Hall Road, is the owner of 315 Webster Road, please address my egress, water, and sewer, also about the impact of wildlife, drainage, and so forth, any trees being left. Well, we pretty much addressed that. Another one was from Maisy.
Was that a comment from 315?
She's, the address, Valerie Appalo, 315 Webster Road.
We're here.
We're here, okay, so you wrote this then, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Your line is from.
Right there. Yeah, point. Sure, go ahead. All right. I'll keep true. Let me finish reading these two and then we'll have to deal with them. This one here, Maisy Wood Hall, please do not build on this land, my yard is already flooded, we've developed the land behind my home, it will be swept, the more you destroy the woods next to the house, where the wild animals even be, they stay in the air. There is a chemistry pass the road, oh, Spanish cemetery across the road. And I think it's completely inappropriate to have construction go ahead for months, even years, while people are attempting to put peacefully more in their losses. And, is this one, those are the two that we had regarding that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
My name is Bob Burquid, I live at 700 Lake Road, Webster, resident on my life.
Bob, take the microphone.
Take the mic, Bob. Anytime I want to listen to you. Anyways, I represent Bob and Valerie there at 315 Webster Road, and that's around a two-acre parcel, and they're on a well, they're on a septic, so any disturbance of that will be a real problem. But I just want to give two things in perspective. First of all, I hope the developer doesn't run away. We need him because we need this problem resolved, and the way you get these problems resolved, drainage, take care of. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's rocket science, you just go downstream and pick up a low point and bring your ditches, swales, piping, and drain the area. It is wet, and it's that simple. So, and I trust you, this planning board, you guys are great, you know what you're doing, and I'm sure that you follow whatever has to be done to ensure it happens. So I think these objections can be overcome, but we have, we have to need assurance that we will get proper drainage of water out of that area because it is, it is wet. Myself personally, I used to build houses as a contractor. I mentioned Mainstone, that's Rainy Swayze, I represented them, I know their problems very, and, yeah, it's a wet area. I think the developer could probably take care of it, but you know, with his planning board to make sure that it's done properly. Other than that, you don't see anything, I know it's a sketch plan, so here are the avalons, we've been at this location for several years, and now we're going to be at all these houses around us, and it's a shock, let's face it, it is. So, and other than that, I'm likely to take him on your time. Welcome to Webster, don't go away because we need your developer to help paper this stuff.
Thanks, Mel. And the drawings, we've got your set of drawings, but you, for sketch plan, you're supposed to have totals out of two.
Well, there are, they're on the drainage.
Are they, I don't have any of those.
Maybe a part of the. They're very, very.
Can you see them? You'd be able to see them out there on the slide.
You could see the, from both, the ones that are solid, but the existing ones, uh, the existing ones are bad.
Yeah. These have been total.
Steel is pretty, very thin on the other end.
I see it.
Say two or five.
But that's not acceptable. That's, that's.
Doesn't show us anything.
Nothing at all. The only reason I know that the drainage is low on the north, east corners, northwest corners is because of the highway department playing out, saving the water, that's the lower area. And that's why I suggested that. All right, anyways, this is Mel.
Hi, I'm Valerie Appalo, and I live at 315 Webster Road. So I am the property that would be, as you come down this, this has been my egress for years, we've been out there over 30 years. As you come back here, I've got a house and we've got a separate building here for our garage. This whole area goes underwater and it ponds way back in here a lot, I mean, big deep pond. So you have a lot of problems with water there. We've had water in the basement, we've had to do all sorts of things to try and alleviate that. But there's also water that comes down both sides of the driveway and sits too. So I mean, there's a good portion of the year that we can't even mow this side of our yard, and even this whole back section we can't mow.
That's not the way.
No. It comes right up to the woods, but some of it is woods and that's all wet. The woods on both sides next to these two properties are full of water. And not now, but they are in the spring.
I have seen water.
Yeah. So we're proposing bringing this in. Are we doing an egress, throw it all the way down or only partially? Are we leaving me?
They're, it shows, on the drawing, they show there's an easement going over.
It is an easement, yeah.
That driveway would remain, but this is going to be finished as part of.
Only up to there. So then on garbage day, you're going to have all these garbage cans that we all have to drag up, with very small space here too, just so you're aware of that, that's going to really be filling up the front of that, because there's usually only room for mine too when I bring them up. Now you're asking all these others to come up.
Those too.
Yeah. Okay?
And we'll be wired.
I'm on a well. What is this going to do to my water with all this building? That's the only access I've handled water for over 30 years. It's good water, but that's all I have. Once you start digging and doing things, what's going to happen? And when they were going to originally do the fire hall, they were going to do a big pond over here. They knew they had to have a retention pond. So I'm very concerned with my septic, with my well being surrounded.
With your, with your well, would you want to keep the well or would you, if they ran a water line to the property line, would you connect to?
If they ran a water line to my property or hooked me up, I'd be more than happy to have it.
For that, okay, that could be something.
They could put stories in there?
Well, you do have access from this bike over here, on Webster Road.
Right, but that has to come across Webster Road, which is.
As will all these.
Right. But you're, you're going to be bringing it back and bring it all the way back because you're really disturbing my property a lot, probably more than anyone else within this whole project.
What you have to do, do you have to bore under the road to deal with that?
Yeah, the water farm actually does that.
Yeah.
And that's a state road.
So that brings it to your property, then you run your water main in to your site.
Well, what we're doing here is we're doing individual water services, and this would be another individual water service, probably a two-inch because of the distance.
Yeah.
And also my gas line comes right down. So you're cutting across my gas line to come into here. So those are the major issues I have with it.
Do you know if your, your easement has any restrictions on development or, or your easement?
I don't know.
You know, how many restrictions?
All right. I think we determined that there's a water issue there.
I think we all agree on that.
Yeah.
Could I make comment on this? I know we're going to take a lot of your time, but.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
What I'm hearing is these people have water problems and they actually drain onto our site. If we put in a pond here, unless we're allowed to put a deep channel in across multiple properties, which I don't, the town would be willing to force that, we'll be, in order to put a pump, we're going to fill all this area, we're going to take the trees out, we're going to fill all this area, and these areas, these lands that. and these areas, these lands that drain, that drain onto here may have more difficulty draining onto our property, just be aware of that. This will not solve their groundwater problems.
You drain onto us, Doc, the other way around. You drain onto us, I can walk you in the back and show you, you drain onto us.
All right, so, no more evidence outside, please.
I, I'm just looking at the comments.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make that point. Developing this, no matter what we do, we're not going to be able to solve your groundwater problems, just be aware of that.
We still are to do this.
And if we are going to put in a pond, it's either going to involve some easements and deep channels or pipes across private property downstream, or it's going to involve filling...
Yeah, I, I heard you say that.
Okay.
Let's, let's, you can review it and see what's possible, what feasibility of running it up. My thought, I mean, I could go anywhere, suppose, but eleven, twelve, because it's in the corner that's the back end, would be a spot for it, but it'd be eleven or twelve, I don't know. But, also I think Josh, new guy at the highway department, you do that also, see where that water drains, if there's any kind of a delineation in there, with swale or anything going out, where the destination of the water would be at the end, I don't know.
Fight to be part of that.
All right, I think it's something that needs to be investigated though, before...
I agree.
...anyone with this. Uh, any, any other drawings you bring in, uh, just bring in the eleven by, eleven by seventeen, I guess, as well.
Uh, you just have to mean until pre-lunar, or...
I'm sorry?
Until pre-lunar, you're going to have to...
Yeah, what you need to have, Josh, you should have got a, um...
They prefer the eleven by seventeen.
Okay. Yeah, you will need full drawings for the engineering department, but for board members and stuff, we don't need, we don't think she's, so just give us the small ones.
Yeah, okay.
Save a couple of your...
Could be mine.
Um, anybody here with comments or comments?
I think we're trying to shoo our, your assets.
But, it's kind of like, I don't know.
Yeah, definitely, it should be dependent on the neighbors as well.
It's actually...
Drainage should be, I was just going to ask you a question.
Yeah. Good comments.
Normally we're doing, yeah.
Um, issue with the well, um... I don't know whose responsibility that would be, if that, if either, I mean, possibility, who's going to say that it isn't going to affect the well?
How deep did the well?
How deep did you want it to be?
Yeah, I'll take, take a look and see how deep that is.
The reason, the reason I'm saying is because if, if there's a possibility of this development interfering with the well, then it seems to me that responsibility should go back to the development to make sure it doesn't damage your well, you know, cause, either cause it to dry, or, or to contaminate. At that point, they have to put a line back in there, so that's something to, to know to deal with that too.
Just, real briefly, I mean, I know he said that he's not going to fix our water problem, I'm not looking to have him fix my water problem, I don't want it worse.
Yeah, exactly.
You know what I mean, that's, that's the biggest thing, right? We've all, we've all learned to deal with what we got.
No matter, no matter how he develops, no matter how this development goes, the bottom line is, when, when it comes in and it's in a stage of a final approval for a subdivision, they have to show where the water is collecting, in other words, like a pond, and how much water is flowing out of there, can be no more than what was flowing off there on the original site, but now it's contained, so in other words, some of you had a house that backed up to it, to the west side there, you, yeah, there you go. See that there, would have to be shown, well, the drainage off the lot would go towards the driveway, toward the road, toward detention, so, that's all down the road with this stuff. First of all, we got to be doing what fits that. Makes sense? Okay? Okay, I guess that's it then.
Well, thank you for your time.
Okay.
I learned a lot, and I appreciate your input, uh, we're going to look into this and catch it, hopefully work with the knowledge and be resolved.
Yeah, work with the knowledge, that'd be pretty...
You are...
Okay, can we ask the guys to come in at twelve, come on, please?
Right.
Hey, how's it going, everybody? How you feeling this year?
Getting old.
You? You didn't get any shorter than before.
I mean, one of us went high...
We have to buy a lot of floor. Yeah, buy a high house. Well, a lot of floors kind of chomped off.
They asked for a little bit of water in the hall, please. They asked for a little bit of water in the hall, please.
What's that?
Yeah, it's my wife.
The other one's...
Thanks, Karen. How are you at Moser? All right, we have a little next one. Seventy-one seventy-five Woodhull, uh, Rockland Natural Reserve Parking Lot located at seventy-seven-five Woodhull, um, on the, on behalf of Allen Day Mills of the Gensie Land Trust, was a final site plan approval, associated with the construction of a six space parking lot to serve from the natural nature, served on the seventy-one acre parcel located in L.L. large locked, single family residential district in the quarter of...
Good evening, I'm Anna Oaks, and I'm the passage engineer, you're on Landscap Park, it's time...
Will they like a little bit closer to you?
Sorry, can you hear me better now? Okay. Um, I was here this past spring, and was able to get preliminary approval from you all for this project, um, like you said, we're constructing, proposing to construct a six space parking lot to provide better, safer car access to the existing nature preserve here. When I was here in the spring, we had kind of determined that there were two items that I needed to address before coming back for final site plan approval. Uh, one of those was to address the hours of operation on the existing signage, um, to the board's satisfaction, and I hope that I've done that, we've shifted the hours, instead of saying dawn to dusk, now we say sunrise to sunset, which mirrors the town of Webster Park system signs. The second item that I needed to address was to, um, get New York State DOT approval, um, and although I don't have the permit in my hands this evening, um, I've addressed all of their comments, and we're just working through the, the final pages of paper to basically get the, the permit sent over, so, um, I've attached, um, a response to comments letter which addresses the PRC comments that we received, um, from Friday, so you all should have that in your packet. Along with that, I've updated the plans to reflect the changes that were asked from the engineering department, um, and I've also provided, um, the two comment letters from DOT. One was from May, that had a few comments that we've addressed, and then one was from June that had no further comments. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
See whether there's any motion to get it, I think it's resolved, or you have anything to do. Very nice, the curb cut, that was the only thing I think I thought you were questioning, why was it so big, but that's what they wanted, that's what the state gave us, so, no biggie. The sign, that was an issue, number one, I have a sign there, you did that, that's meeting standards, and also that's what, uh, what else was there that was of any concern? But that was pretty much it, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, there were a couple of things, like with erosion, it's out of control, we worked on that out, so...
Right. And you're here for Fido, I think, too?
Yes.
No, I don't feel, yeah. What other, move forward with it?
We have to do secret letter, and then...
No, this is Fido, we're all there.
Okay.
This is just a simple, it's presented drawing.
I have a motion that, uh, the, the site, my final site plan approval for seventeen seventy-five Ridge Road, uh, limiting nature reserve parking lot, and, um, this is subject to PRC comments, subject to applicable fees, government fees, and any, uh, subject to broader approval conditions, subject to Department of Public Works approvals, significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board, to expire on seven nineteen twenty twenty-three. Got that one right?
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we know.
Okay, draw.
I'll second it. This is less than, was that easy? Yeah. Yep.
Ten thirteen Ridge Roads Splash Car Wash Inc., located ten thirteen Ridge Road, Splash Car Wash Inc., requesting, uh, sketch plan review, associated with the construction of a seven thousand square foot car wash, on a two point one six acre parcel, located in MC, medium intensity, uh, commercial district, and the core town of Webster.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Kate Greer with DDS Engineers at forty-five Hendrix Road in Port Huron, New York. Um, also with me here tonight is Dave Clonance with, uh, representing Splash Inc. Um, we're here tonight to introduce to you our proposed project, um, at the sketch plan level, and to get your feedback, and ultimately, we're looking for a positive recommendation to the zoning board for this project, in order to pursue a use variance, um, in order to operate a car wash, uh, facility within the MC zoning district. Um, the developers are proposing to build a new automated car wash facility at, uh, property, the subject property, ten thirteen Ridge Road. The project site is approximately one point eight six acres, there will be another, um, point three acres of the, uh, adjacent property to the south, that they would, um, purchase and combine into the lot, for a total of two point, uh, one six acres. Uh, it's currently vacant parcel, zoned, MC medium intensity zoning, and it also falls under the progressive development, uh, overlay district. Uh, the project will consist of construction of a new, uh, seventy-one hundred square foot plus or minus car wash facility on the western portion of the parcel, and in addition, the project will include, uh, new concrete pavement, landscaping, lighting, and utility connections. Access to the site will be provided via the private development, um, ring road, as I would call it, the one that's behind Wendy's, and, uh, you can deal right in there. Um, patrons that exit onto the south portion of that ring road can then make their way either to Ridge Road or, um, Shoe Craft, as they choose. We met with town staff, um, at the beginning of June of this year, and, uh, took feedback from that meeting, and incorporated that into the site plan that you have before you today. And, and one of those big items was, uh, keeping that egress on the south side there. That, that way they have a choice to split between Ridge Road and Shoe Craft, and not all the traffic is, um, set right up to Ridge Road. Um, so now I'd like to hand it over to Dave, and he can go over operations and kind of the site circulation details a little bit for you.
Good evening, uh, Dave Clonance, representing Splash Car Wash. Uh, the operation of the car wash is, uh, it's a manned car wash, we're open to the public, uh, on normal, regular hours from typically around seven thirty, o'clock in the morning, till seven thirty, o'clock at night. Uh, it's a system that's, an automated system where patrons, as they pull in, are able to pay with cash, credit card, or if they're a member and they have, uh, with the ability to do license plate recognition, like in the EZ Pass type system, and for a monthly fee, they can wash the car unlimited. Any patron that pays for the service can use a, a vacuum area free of charge at the facility, and then as Kate alluded to, everyone would want to exit back onto the ring road, and they can choose to either exit towards Shoe Craft and, and, uh, and Ridge Road. We know through the experience of, uh, operating in a neighborhood of sixty car washes now, uh, throughout the east coast, typical habits of patrons, if they're given a choice to go either way, they, they recognize they can, they'll choose the path of least resistance, so, it'd be easier to get to a light at Shoe Craft than it is to get out of Ridge Road, so, giving them a couple of choices often works out to, to keep track and flow and something. I think beyond that, uh, control for access, uh, this is going to be an exit only, there's going to be an automated gate, so that only patrons that have come in through the service can exit, there'll be a, a loop in the asphalt or the concrete that allows the patrons to leave, the gate comes out, they leave, exit the property, people can't come in there, so it's kind of like one way, one big traffic loop. And again, we know that, uh, this use has to go before another board for the next steps, we wanted to share it so that you get your feedback, recommendation, and answer any questions you had at this time.
Uh, you said you had a lot of, uh, any other locations in the area, or...
Uh, so, it's, um, uh, myself and, and another business partner own, own Classic Chassis for the past twenty-five years, we merged with Splash in the fall of last year, we, we have, uh, then purchased the Buckman sites, there's four Buckman sites, the Malco sites in Penfield we purchased, all of those are under the, uh, renovation stages of taking that to the level where we offer this type of service, an automated system that, uh, is, is, uh, free of employee, a lot of employee traffic, people stay in their cars, it's an automated system, and then free vacuums, that model is what we're doing throughout Rochester, we're in the transition stages in five locations, and we have Penny and applications in Henrietta and other locations. Uh, to answer your question, the latest, uh, model that exists is in Geneva, New York, uh, there are projects throughout the state, but the closest one that's in operation today is either Williamsville or Geneva that operates like this model, which is new to us.
Question, actually two that I have, first of all, you provided us with this colored map, I don't know if you saw it, um, is that, the color, no, the two, or two, um, the two you want to put up?
We have, uh, a variety of different models that we have used throughout, uh, different municipalities, and our approach to, is to be a, is a collaborative effort to the municipalities, so, this is one of our models, we're actually building... So this is one of our models, we're actually building that one in Henrietta. It has a certain flavor. If the ones we built in Williamsville, for example, have a totally different character and by the smirkin' tone space, I think he's leaning towards.
Well, you brought, the drawing you originally brought in had stone and brick and
Sure does.
It kind of matched what's over there now. So what I saw is about the same thing, this looks like Wendy's came in with this stuff.
But the next time we come back with the masonry and the nice colors, then all the, you'll love it. But no, we, in all seriousness, we do want your feedback and we will, like I say, we look at this as a collaborative effort with the municipalities. We know that we have to be a good neighbor and fit into the community. Yes, you did mention in our informal meeting the first time that the masonry aspects of some of the surrounding neighborhood businesses would be more attractive. I do know that. This is just a representation of a car wash. Again, if I'm getting feedback on something different, which I knew, I kind of figured we would.
Well, I think a lot of the conversation then was this actual layout.
Exactly.
And that's, that was key on this.
To be quite candid, Kate, to his credit, suggested we not bring these, but we did submit them and we put them up here, but we understand, we gotta, we gotta find where we fit in and into you here, so no problem.
Well, the plus for the way this is laid out now, after we all discussed this thing, was it encourages exiting over towards Shoe Craft Road. Through the back way there?
Yeah.
Cut.
Unless you're taking that right.
I'm sorry?
Unless you're taking that right.
Unless you're taking the right. Oh, yeah, well, no, no, that, yeah, there's no way you can stop it, but that's hoping that they're directed to go that way.
I was looking at this a little differently here. How many cars can you marshal going into the car wash?
I'm sorry, the question is how many can we?
I mean, stand in line there or?
Oh, you're queuing.
Stand, yeah.
Yeah, so we have stacking availability on this site for around seventy-four cars. And so it's a very large site, so plenty, plenty of stacking. Yep. I mean, this entire road here on the outside, there's a double lane that goes into a triple lane and then another double lane. It's significant. I think seventy-four would be a conservative.
Yeah, I think it shows plenty of stacking ability.
Yeah.
One thing that I'm glad to see on the list here of comments made by the PRC is regard to an independent traffic study. You're definitely gonna need one. You try to pull out of this parking lot, especially tonight, take a left heading east. You probably want your first social security check the next day, I don't think that's a lot of a take. Going onto Shoe Craft Road, there's also, I don't know if you've ever been down heading south, or excuse me, north, but there is a bend around the road there. And if you go, as some people do, you know, don't bother to pay attention. Potential, possible traffic problems there. Especially if your people are coming out and using the Shoe Craft drone as a, as a exit to get onto Ridge or wherever they're going.
Yeah, to just put it in context, and yes, we do recognize and we've done plenty of work with third-party independent traffic studies to provide for municipalities. Although it seems like an intensive, we can all imagine that sunny day in the winter when the car washes are busy. Our average peak output that affects the traffic well is in the neighborhood of sixty cars. So in other words, we get sixty extra destination type based vehicles onto our property. What's interesting about our experience with the traffic studies is that, given the choice to take multiple exits, it significantly changes the impact traffic because thankfully, people are intuitive and they know that if they see a long line that's exiting or they know the experience of turning left out of Ridge Road, they won't do it, they're gonna find a light and exit at Shoe Craft. That's why we think it's a unique site. Certainly, we know we have some more homework to do to provide more accurate traffic information, but we feel very confident. We've actually even engaged with a third party already in anticipation of that for this project to make sure that we feel comfortable that it's doable. We know that we have to, we have to satisfy the time in there.
I have a question about doctor's offices next to it.
Argue so.
So it looks like you're taking away the driveway to him and he's gonna have access through the back. Has that been discussed with that doctor?
Yeah, it's a great question and that's, I think we met with informally with some people from the town and going away from there until now, it took that long to figure out, you know, these easements, the course of history and how this has happened and where these arrangements came from. To answer your question in a short manner, yes, he's been spoken to. There is no right to access that area. Are you willing to share with Ring Road? That will have to formalize with some more cross-access easements and so forth, maintenance agreements, but yes, you want to talk to them.
They'll be able to maintain this parking spot? Or the property?
Another source of investigation that is our engineers come up, the site, the site has enough space fortunately that we can move whatever we need to accommodate that. No, we're not taking away these spots, but we do have to work that out. There's some boundary issues that we gotta sort out along with the subdivision. So cross-access, some reciprocating, cross-access agreements, and maintenance agreements, all are in the works. And we've got to firm all of that up and deal as it progresses.
What is the purpose of those front parking lots that the systems are taking over?
These? Yeah. Yes. I can only, I can't speak for the owner. They, when the owner developed it, I believe they were trying to make it attractive for development as long, as well as providing access to the Dr. Tingley. That's all I can imagine, I can't speak for the owner, but I believe it was some future use benefit from having those already built.
Why did you pick this particular location?
Well, Webster is a source for us of interest, has been for many years. The ability to find a parcel that is zoned properly for what we do is very difficult in the town. So we then found the most desirable spot that was available and decided to take the charge of trying to get it approved for use as a car wash. Other than that, I think as I reviewed the history of the town, I know that there's been a few car washes that have gotten approved in the town. One was built, another is either pending or maybe they decided not to go both.
Yeah, I think that one's pending.
Tall tasks, and I recognize that, but we feel the demographics and in our research, that another one is warranted in the town. Again, I don't want to give you part, if you want to hear about our business plan, it's great, it's about membership. People are washing their cars exponentially more than they have ten years ago. Therefore, more locations are warranted because more people are washing their cars more frequently. So this particular town has a need for it, that in our opinion. Sites that are approved, that are big enough, are not easy to find, can't find any. We're willing to invest, this is a big parcel, it's almost two acres of use. It fits our, it fits all of our, checks all the boxes and we're willing to take on the, you know, the task of getting approved for use and through the planning board.
See, the only issue that I had when we discussed this, I think the project is a nice project and everything. It does need to get a variance, obviously, but my biggest concern is that traffic on Ridge Road. And I, have you dealt with the state at all yet or?
In previous projects, but not in this one.
Not this one?
Specifically, no.
At some point, they have to be involved, Josh?
I don't believe so because they're not posing any maneuver that's onto the road.
With the additional traffic? I don't, I don't know.
Well, I think the key is to keep, keep the traffic going on the Shoe Craft. There may be a sign right on the corner stating exit, exit the Shoe Craft Ridge Road.
It's hard to call the history and what I've learned from various sources is that in the development of the Wendy's, it was anticipated that this would fully, this would develop further in the past. And there was turning lanes added and certain driveways were closed and site distances were established to place that driveway where it is for the Wendy's development and future development. That's why we, we know, we recognize that we need to use that one only and that, and that we're gonna give folks an option to get to a traffic light.
You know, I think their layout is really good because they do have it worn out towards the back road.
Yeah, no, that was the idea you told earlier.
That was Tony's, some of Tony's.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, no.
I think people learn pretty quick that you can't make a left-hand turn out of this place on Ridge Road during traffic time. But making a right-hand turn is no problem at all. And like you say, a directional sign maybe pointing people to go out to Shoe Craft, Shoe Craft and Ridge Road. Would encourage them to use that way.
It's a good point, Dave, you know what? Where you're at point of proceeding with this, that might not be a bad idea to show when you go to the ZVA even. It's how you propose it, because that would be a question too about traffic on Ridge Road. That's everybody's angle today.
Yeah.
And if you got something to show that you're trying to, you know, mediate that.
Interesting, I went out there and watched some of the traffic patterns and then I looked at the asphalt, even the folks leaving the Wendy's, how many people, you can see a lot of traffic activity that knows that even double out here to go to Shoe Craft. So I think, especially when we get traffic studies though, the counts will be established of what actual traffic patterns are and then what ours will impact and how many will, you know, fight, but trades of drivers, which way they'll, they'll go.
I still would have wished to, one day to see that. We talked about the entrance and exit, you know, alongside the town hall, laying up across the street somewhat there to a signal light there to control traffic. You can't get out of this place at all.
No, you can't.
Out of town hall, you know. You can't get out. It's a nightmare, you literally will sit there for ten minutes trying to get out of there.
And it'll be interesting to see what's gonna happen tonight with Bald, seeing what's going on and.
Well, I'm gonna go the other way. You have the cars are in the parking lot, town.
I still am concerned about Shoe Craft, that bend to Shoe Craft heading north. And it's not their fault or the, you know.
The bend actually?
Yeah, if you're coming down Shoe Craft Road from, say, State Road, maybe you're heading towards Bridge. You go past where they just put that white fence up a couple of years ago to the, the car dealership.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you gotta make a.
There's a curve. Well, that curve, that curve was put in, there used to be, the bank used to be on the corner there. And when they took the bank out, that was the realignment of Shoe Craft Road, Hard Road, that's why they've got that.
Great, that I like.
This was, it's a faraway, you know.
And I used to. I've seen people all buzz down there about speeding and, you know, if you get people coming out, and again, it's not their fault or anything like that.
That's, that's the design of the road though.
Yeah, and they anticipated a lot of use, to tell you the truth, because you have other properties that were involved with this whole thing. You know, to what we expected it was gonna be. That's why we wanted that road. Get them over, get them over to Shoe Craft Road. I don't anticipate that there will be that kind of an issue.
Actually, the initial part of that, where this back road here could go to, out to Shoe Craft? That's a dedicated road right there. The anticipation of that.
Might be extended by a road.
No, in eighty-four, no, but, you know, it's private drive. But yeah, that was, that was all planned from the beginning. Yeah, anyways, that's history now.
And sooner or later, that property's gonna be developed for something and that's what we intend to do no matter what. But that's all anticipated in the project design from the beginning.
All right, and are there any other?
Yeah, my questions are this.
Yeah, both I know. So you gotta go to the ZVA. I'll leave it at the board, board's decision, I don't know what you want, do we send a letter to the, to go on as an owner of a construction here? Do we send a letter for what?
It wouldn't hurt to send a letter, bringing up the issues that we brought tonight, including the traffic study, emphasizing on that. I don't feel included in any of that. The signs are a little bit vague.
Same way to go, I thought this was gonna go with them.
I like this location. I like this location for car wash more than any.
You okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, if you guys are okay with it, then we'll write a letter to the, to ZVA. We're okay with it.
Just a little more feedback in the building and we don't have to talk about that one, but masonry.
Yeah, you know, they think I got a picture, some wicked block or something, you know, but no. What you showed at the, when we met, you know, at the town hall? You showed a nice brick building, had stone on it. You know what, I know what I'm talking about.
I do.
It was a nice looking building, I mean, something along those lines.
More on car wash. That's mostly correct, very good.
Yeah, that's all written on, this, this is actually more attractive looking than that is. The way the designer, so yeah, if you got something, you got to show that one there. Little gold thing that confide to you or whatever, that's, this blue is not gonna make it.
Yeah, when I saw that blue, I remember all of that got, somebody snuck that in there.
Sometimes, sometimes like that, sometimes, so we'll, like I say, our approach is to work with you and we will.
Okay, we all set with it then?
Yeah.
All right, and we'll send a, we'll write a letter to the zoning board. Support it, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, that was the last thing that's in issue, right?
That's the last one.
Let's, before we close, Dave Arena here has been on the zoning board appeals from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and seven. And from two thousand and seven to current, he's been on the planning board, so that's how many years Dave has been involved with, with the town. And Dave is deciding to leave, he is moving down south to North, it's up Carolina.
North.
North Carolina. And building a house down there, I'll be moving, so he won't be moving. And I hate to see him go, he's been great here, I think he's donated unselfishly for many years, a lot of work to the town. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you for having me.
With that, I guess we can say goodnight, thank you all.
Goodnight.
Before we go.
I'll make a motion to approve the best of the twenty-first.
Okay, I'll make, you made a motion, Dave? Mark? Mark, yeah, okay. Okay? Now, before we leave, since Dave is leaving, well, Dave's been secretary to the board for several years, we need to have new person to serve. John Kozel has mentioned it to me and, and Marcus also showed interest in doing it. Mark worked at the tower, he's very familiar with all this stuff. I'm gonna leave this up to you guys, somebody want to nominate someone?
Secretary, Nate Mark.
Okay, we need a second.
Second one.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We have Mark, Jermaine serves as our new secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys still vote?
Yeah.
Everybody's okay?
All right.
All right. Well, that makes, that makes Mark our new secretary now. Okay.
Okay. Hey, you've been good luck.
Oh, we'll be back. We never, we don't say bye. See you later.
That's it. See ya. See ya, we wanna be, yeah.
I'll be, I'll be, I got the phone over here, I'm gonna be calling you. Long distance.
Just tell her, just tell her, they're chasing all the blocks and period on the North Carolina, what's going on?
Yeah, right? Don't hesitate to invite us down here.
Yeah, right. I don't mind a drive.
Hi, how are you? Oh. Hey, Roz, how are you?
I'm glad to see you guys, actually.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Roz, I'm pretty happy.